Monday, August 3rd, 2020. Uh... Roll call, please.
Reagan?
Here.
Forsythe?
Here.
Lightfoot?
Here.
Sheridan?
Here.
Smithers?
Here.
Denisha?
Here.
Perkins?
Here.
Akers?
Here.
Fay?
Here.
Bagger?
Here.
Iaco? Burke?
Here.
Darkwood?
Here.
Terminelli?
Here.
Curran?
Here.
Fourteen present.
Thank you. The deputy clerk, read your calls to the public hearing, please.
Notice is hereby given by the Chair of the St. Lawrence County Board of Legislators that the Chair and the members of the Board of Legislators of the County of St. Lawrence will meet at the Board of Legislators' chambers courthouse located at 48 Court Street, Canton, New York, at 5:45 PM on Monday, August 3rd, 2020, for the purpose of conducting a public hearing regarding adopting local law A for the year 2020, setting salaries for county employees. Being enacted by the St. Lawrence County Board of Legislators as follows. Section 1, for the year 2020, salaries for the following individuals shall be increased by 2.7%, 2.75% as follows, and those not at the maximum for the pay grade will advance one step on the schedule. Conflict defender, 102,818. County administrator, 125,997. County attorney, 121,284. County clerk, 90,361. County treasurer, 90,361. Director of Human Resources, 102,818. Director of Real Property, 84,177. Election Commissioners, 67,737. Highway Superintendent, 111,441. Public Defender, 91,483. Sheriff, 102,818. Commissioner of Social Services, not currently filled. Section 2, the local law shall take effect in accordance with the municipal home rule law of the state of New York.
Thank you.
Chair.
And, Mr. Smithers?
Could I ask you, could you read again the salary proposal for the election commissioner and public defender person?
The--
I think yours aren't matching those.
The election commissioner, 67,738. Who was the other one?
Public defender.
The public defender, 93,221.
That's what I have.
Okay, all set? Yeah, Mr. Fay?
And mine says 2020, 21.
What I have in front of me says 93,221.
Now I'm talking about the year.
Oh. For the year 2020?
Yes.
Yes. Okay. For 2020. Go ahead.
So this is to accompany the CSEA contract that's recently been settled. You will see in the budget, the salaries for 2021. So none of these positions have received any increases that CSEA or management have now been applied.
So in other words, it's because of the contractual agreements that we just reached with for not only upcoming years, but for this year also. Okay? Anyone else? All right. Now is the time for anybody in the public who wishes to comment. Any citizen wanting to address the board is asked to stand at the microphone during the time that they address the board. The address will be limited to a time of five minutes. Please state your name before beginning your address. Is there anyone that wishes to address the board at this public hearing? Seeing none, hearing is closed. We're adjourned until 6 o'clock for the full board meeting. The call order, the Monday, August 3rd, meeting of the St. Lawrence County Board of Legislators. I entertain a motion to suspend the rules by legislator Curran, seconded by Mr. Forsythe. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carry? Roll call, please.
Yes.
Forsythe?
Yes.
Lightfoot?
Here.
Sheridan?
Here.
Smithers?
Here.
Denisha?
Here.
Perkins?
Here.
Akers?
Here.
Fay?
Here.
Bagger?
Here.
Terminelli?
Here.
Curran?
Here.
Fifteen present.
Thank you. Next, we would move to the prayer, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Prayer by Mr. Denisha.
Mr. Chairman, it's just a moment, I would, I would ask for a moment of silence in memory of lost loved ones due to the, due to the pandemic and other causes. Thank you. Heavenly Father, we thank you for the opportunity to gather here this evening. Please accept our continued gratitude for the numerous blessings you have bestowed upon us. We ask that you provide guidance to us and all the residents of our country, which we struggle as a nation through these uncertain and divisive times. We also ask that your divine presence provides comfort to those who are ill, those who are less fortunate, and those who despair through the loss of loved ones, and in many cases, their livelihoods. For all these things, we ask your blessing, your song, and our reward, Jesus Christ, in whose name all things are possible. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I entertain a motion to approve the agenda by Mr. Smithers, seconded by Mr. Forsythe. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carry? I would entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the July 6th board meeting by Ms. Curran, seconded by Mr. Sheridan. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carry? At this time, we will have an update regarding COVID-19. I see Dr. Williams. Are you first, or is--
Dana.
Dr. McGuire? Dr. McGuire, you got your court straw.
Okay, thank you. So we put some slides together tonight as well. You can go to the next slide, please. This is the update that we give to Facebook each day. So as you can see, we have 258 cases. There are six active cases, which four of those are hospitalized right now. And to date, we've had four ca-- or, I'm sorry, four deaths. Next slide, please. So as I mentioned, we currently have 258 cases. We had one new case just over this past weekend. Five of the active cases right now do have symptoms, and two of these cases are related to screening prior to a medical procedure. So keep in mind, these folks are those who got tested that are positive but did not know, and they had the screening just simply so that they could have the procedure. So so far, we have had one new case this week. I put the testing sites and their phone numbers here just to remind everyone, these are the phone numbers you can call for a test. These days, mo-- most, most everyone can be tested, so you can call these numbers. They do take it by, by an appointment. Last week at this meeting, we had 254 cases, so there's been four new cases just in the last week. Next slide. So here, it just shows that we had that uptick last month, and we are kind of showing that, that we are coming down. Last month, we did have a weak period where we had 14, 14, 14 cases just in this week. And as you'll see, next slide, please. On a weekly basis, we're now back down again. And so so far, for this week, we've only had three cases. So that's a drop, as you can see by the graph, as compared to the last two weeks. Next slide. For a case averaged by day, we are also decreasing. So right now, we're at .5 cases per day. We still have one day left in this week for, for the reporting, because we usually do from Wednesday to Tuesday, but this is a lot lower than we've seen for last month. Next slide, please. Here, I just report what we're seeing by age. And so again, like we mentioned last week, we have three age groups that, that really stand out. The one that is highlighted, the 51 to 60, that is where the average cases have fallen for this week. Next slide, please. And by six, or by sex, we're staying the same, we're about at 54% being female. Next slide, please. This just shows who we have had in isolation or quarantine since we started in March. We currently have seen about 2,500 that have went through isolation or quarantine. So like I said, we currently have six that are in active isolation. We have 62 people who are in the mandatory quarantine, and 336 who are in the precautionary. And I'll get into kind of how those splay out in just a minute. Next slide, please. So we have had 18 weeks of the response. We're just going to be, kind of coming up on the close of the 19th week. But again, our first case was on March 25th, and you can see here during each of the months how we rose and then fell again with cases, and then we kind of rose back up for the last month. We have also seen more people go through the quarantine process, and this is always due to, when we have more cases, and now due to the travel advisory that we do have. Next slide, please. I just wanted to do a comparison of the last two months that we've had. So on 6/1, we had 205 cases. Where on July 1, we had 217. At both of the first dates of those months, we had no one in the hospital. And you can see during that one month time period, we had about 20 people do the completion of, of isolation. At the beginning of June, we only had two deaths, and at the beginning of July, we had three. And now, as you know, we've had our fourth. During the month of June, we had 12 new cases, and of those cases, two had the symptoms. Eight were due to the nursing home staff that had to go through the regular testing. We didn't have any due to travel, because that started on the 25th of June, that we had to start to put people into the quarantine process. We had none or no cases due to a screening because of a procedure, and we had one hospitalization during that month. For the month of July, we had 40 new cases, and 23 of these had symptoms. So like I've mentioned in the past, we've seen people just be more ill. 10 of these 40 were due to travel, and that's due to the travel advisory. Eight were either nursing home staff or a, a resident. 13 were related to a, to a gathering. Six were due to a screening due to a medical procedure, and we had seven hospitalizations. Of note, the average age of cases in June was 34 years, wherein July, it was 44. So that's the comparison of what we can see, and you can see that there was more cases and, and people were more ill as well. Next slide, please. There are currently 34 states in the advisory, and these states are updated on a weekly basis. And so Tuesday is the day that the new states kind of come out, so you should be watching for that, because they should be out in the morning. Next slide, please. Due to the travel advisory, we have seen just over 50,000 people be identified, and this is for the state. We have seen about 484 that were positive, so due to the travel advisory, these people were kind of captured in the system so that we could get them to be isolated. We are currently using the New York State, the virtual team. So I've mentioned that we have 336 people in quarantine, and this is the precautionary quarantine. So this is the quarantine that you go into due to travel, and all of these individuals are being monitored right now by the virtual team, which has taken just a significant lift from our department. And so this virtual team, they, they function out of the central region, and so they have been assisting us. All of the data, and I've mentioned that there's a form that you fill out at the, at the airports, can be online or a paper form. That data goes into the com care system. So a New York state keeps all of the data on these individuals. We are the 16th county out of the 57 in the state with regards to how many travelers we have put into quarantine, and for the North Country, we are second. We have had 576 people go into quarantine because of the travel advisory. And here, just list the states. So the ones in red were the ones that were added last week. We get a lot of questions in our office about isolation and quarantine, so I just wanted to go over this again. If you go into isolation, it's because you've tested positive, and you must go into isolation for at least 10 days from the day that your symptom starts, or the day that you had your test. You go into quarantine if you are exposed to a positive person, or if you have done any travel. So that could be due to a close contact with someone who is positive, or you can have done travel from a country or a state with high case numbers. Next slide, please. So when we explain that, we get a lot of questions on, well, so when can I get out? And I just wanted to go over, because we do get a lot of questions, that for isolation, it's at least 10 days, and you have to show that, that you no longer have a fever for at least 72 hours, and that all of the other symptoms are kind of improving. So it's at, at least 10 days, and that's from the day that your symptoms started, or that you had the test. And so you can see that by the time the public health department reaches out and talks to the person, it may not be 10 days from that day, it's 10 days from when the symptoms started, or from when you had the test. For quarantine, quarantine is always 14 days, and it's 14 days from the last day of the exposure. So that could be from the person who tested positive, or from the state that you left that is at high risk. So we get a lot of questions that, well, if I get a test during that 14 days, and that test then becomes negative, do I have to stay in quarantine for the whole time? The answer is yes. We also get the question, if the person who I was exposed to tested positive is no longer in isolation, do I have to stay just in the quarantine process? And the answer is yes. And that period cannot change because of the 14 days that you could start to see the symptoms. And so that is incubation period. And so just because you test, you test negative on one day, or the person who, who you have had the exposure from is done, we have to watch that, that 14 day. Next slide, please. So we get several questions like this, and this is how we're trying to address it. We do try to be just very transparent by putting maps out and trying to answer questions. So this is one that we have just, just, just most recently made, and we will be posting to Facebook. Next slide, please. This is one that we put out a few weeks ago, because our numbers are not tracking with the states, the state tracker. And so we just want to make sure that people understand why it's different. We do try to find why our, our numbers are different, we try to locate those, but it's due to the address that is kind of reported. There are duplicate tests sometimes, so we are trying just to figure that out, but if you look at all of the counties, they're not in alignment with what the state is currently saying. Next slide, please. So this didn't come out very well, but that graph is the one that I showed you, and this is a dashboard that we provide to partners on a weekly basis, so that they can see just all of the numbers, they can see what we're doing with the quarantine process. And then these are the maps that we also post to the county website and to Facebook. Next slide, please. I just wanted to make a clarification. On the active case map, we were doing a highlight of those new cases. We stopped putting the highlight of new cases on, because it was getting kind of too challenging to explain what, what we were seeing. At times, we talked to somebody who has had a test and actually waited 10 days or more for the results, and so by the time we know of the new case, their isolation period is done. And so while they're a, they're a-- And so while they're a new case, that they'll show up in the township, they won't show up just as an active case because they don't need to do the isolation process. So that's just something to keep in mind is that the time for testing has kind of varied through the weeks. And there's been many people who have been asymptomatic. So that's why it's just really important that we do follow the recommendations for mask wearing and to practice the social distancing. Next slide, please. We do have this resource for all the partners. And just to go over this again, as people are kind of opening up more, we have a lot of guidance on face mask wearing for the do's and don'ts for people who want to train their staff, just for people. And we add things as they become new and important. And my last slide is just to remember what we all need to be doing as a community. Wear a mask, practice the social distancing, wash your hands, stay home if you're sick, and try to stay local. And now I'll pass it on to Dr. Williams.
Thanks Dana. So I was going to go over a couple of things. The first thing I wanted to start with is talking about an overview of testing. A key element of the public health response is to test patients for COVID. And I wanted to just clarify the different kinds of tests and the appropriate use of those tests. There will not be a quiz after this. So there are three basic types of tests that are currently available. The first type is called a molecular or a PCR test. The second type is an antigen test. And the third type is an antibody test. I'm going to explain the molecular test first. So the molecular PCR test is actually looking for viral RNA. The collection for this test is with a nasopharyngeal swab, a nasal or an oral sample. And this is a test that can be done on a rapid within one hour. Or more commonly, it's sent out to a reference lab, which can take several days. And as I'll talk about later, it can take up to 10 to 12 days. Unfortunately, we have a limited access to the rapid version of this test. So that's why we send them out to reference labs. So this test is really the gold standard. This is the test that you can use because it's accurate enough to look for people who are with symptoms or without symptoms. And this is the test that we use in the hospital setting or a test that the universities are using because it's such an accurate, high-quality test. The second kind of test is called an antigen test. And the antigen test, rather than looking for the RNA, is actually looking for parts of the virus, like a protein. The collection is the same. The main difference is these are available at the point of care. So they can be available in urgent care offices or in doctors' offices. And you can get the results back within 30 minutes. The problem with the antigen tests, even though they're appealing because of their speed, they're really only appropriate for testing people who have symptoms. So people who have fever, cough, change in sense of smell and taste, things like that. The negative test is considered unreliable. And so it's not appropriate because of the high rates of false negatives to test certain people. So as I mentioned at our previous meeting, the Association for Public Health Labs issued a guidance saying specifically that these tests should not be used for screening individuals without symptoms. Should not be used for screening high-risk travelers, essential employees, or preoperative patients. And I would suggest that using it in that context is likely just to provide false reassurance to a community that people don't have this disease because that's not what it's designed for. The third kind of test are the antibody tests. And there's quite a bit of media about these antibody tests. They're also called serology tests. And they're looking for evidence of antibodies. This is a blood draw, so it's a different collection. And it can be run at our local hospitals or it can be sent to a reference lab. So you can get these test results back within the same day or sometimes up to a few days. But again, this test is really, it's not for diagnosing an active infection. It's for documenting a previous infection. So it's very helpful for epidemiologic studies. It's also helpful to identify people who have previously had the disease and may have what's called convalescent plasma that can be used to treat people who are currently ill. But it's not a screening test. And the issue, the concept of using it to prove that someone was immune, I think is still a debate as we're trying to figure out whether people really truly become effectively immune to this disease or not. The challenges we're facing in terms of the testing right now are number one, inappropriate test utilization. So as I talked about the difference between when an antigen test could be used versus a molecular test. The other thing is cost. So for the PCR test, it can be between $100 and $150. It's a little bit less for the rapid test and for the antibody tests, but it's still a cost and trying to figure out who's going to cover this is often an issue. Perhaps the most pressing issue is turnaround times. So I think people have realized that in the past month or so, the turnaround times have increased to greater than 10 days. And the turnaround time is the time between when we collect the sample and when an individual gets their results. As Dana said, sometimes the tests were coming back 11 or 12 days after the sample was taken. So she's basically calling people to tell them that they should have been in isolation instead of that they should be in isolation. So you can imagine that poses real challenges for public health. What I want to point out is that it's sort of a simple mathematical equation as the number of COVID tests go up in the US, and that's what that graph shows. And you have inadequate testing resources on a national level, you simply end up with testing delays. The good news is in the past week, there's been significant improvement. And as of today, many of the labs are reporting about a three-day turnaround time, which is a lot better than the 10 days or 12 days that we dealt with a couple of weeks ago. One of the reasons that we're seeing the better turnaround times are because of pooled testing. And I've mentioned pooled testing a few times before, but I wanted to just illustrate exactly what pooled testing means. So the idea with pooled testing is you collect specimens from multiple individuals, but then you run one test. If that one test is negative, then you're good. All four people are by definition negative. If that sample is positive, you basically retest each individual sample. And in that way, you identify the person who was positive in that pool. So it's just one of the things that's happened recently that's allowed the testing times to be improved. And so LabCorp and BioReference both received their FDA approval to do this kind of testing. And as you'll see, some of the universities are going to use these resources. The next thing I want to talk about, I think this was a request of one of the legislators at the last meeting, was to talk about the differences between seasonal influenza and COVID-19. A couple of comparison points. So if you recall, there's something called the R0 number, which basically shows how contagious a virus is. And what you can see is that COVID is substantially more contagious than influenza. It also has a longer incubation time, which makes it more insidious and more difficult to track down from a public health perspective. More likely that people are going to be symptomatic and not know it. The hospitalization rate is substantially higher than with influenza. And the case fatality rate suggests that it's more deadly. The other characteristic we're all familiar with is as people advance in age, they're much more likely to die when they become infected with a virus. And then finally, what you see is that the CDC finally came out with their best estimate for deaths from the 2018, 2019 influenza season. And as you can see, if you measure from right now, we have approximately 160,000 deaths so far from COVID-19. It's almost eight times more deadly. And of course, COVID hasn't, isn't over yet, unfortunately. The other thing that I think is unique in some ways to COVID, compared, at least compared to influenza, is that while there's an acute illness, there's also chronic complications. And what we're seeing is that there's multiple systems that are involved. And that's really probably because the virus, there's almost two phases of this illness. People get the viral infection. And then their immune system, in the process of trying to fight that virus, ends up causing quite a bit of damage. So what we're seeing now is what people are referring to as COVID survivors. And these are people who end up having chronic disabilities. And this is something that's not really captured in the death rate. Now, this isn't everyone, and I'm going to talk about that later. But for people who do get their version of this, what we're seeing is that, you know, there was a study that showed that of people who presented to the emergency room because of COVID, 1.6 of them had had a stroke. And some of them have had, you know, chronic disability related to that stroke. And somewhere between 40 and 60% of patients have had neurologic symptoms. And there's also evidence of persistence. So some people, three or four months out, are describing an inability to concentrate. You know, these are people who had jobs where that was required. The other thing is blood clots. This is a very odd disease. And we have almost a third of patients who are severely ill end up with life-threatening blood clots. If they survive the blood clot, they often are dealing with being on chronic therapy for their blood clots and other complications. Kidney failure, another system that's affected with COVID. And in a series that they looked at in New York City, they said between 40 and 80% of patients had some degree of kidney failure. Some of them requiring temporary dialysis, but some of them with permanent kidney failure. The other system that it impacts is the heart. And we saw quite a large percentage of people with either acute heart attacks or just this last week, somebody did a study where they did cardiac MRIs of people who had actually recovered. And 78% of them had evidence of ongoing inflammation or other damage from the virus that they apparently had recovered from. And in that series, it was done in Germany. These were people who were hospitalized and people who were not hospitalized. So that's especially concerning. And then finally, the lungs. More than 70% of people have evidence of inflammation in their lungs when they're diagnosed. And what we're seeing now is many people develop what's called pulmonary fibrosis, which can lead to significant disability over time. So the bottom line in terms of COVID-19 versus the flu is, you know, COVID-19 is clearly capable of causing widespread death and disease to a degree that we really don't see with seasonal influenza. I would argue that underestimation of this virus continues to have tragic consequences. And that a delay, an ongoing delay in implementing sensible mitigation measures has already led to increased death and suffering as well as increased economic hardship. So that was my answer to the difference between COVID-19 and the flu. I don't want this to be a depressing review, so I didn't want to talk about a couple of good news features. So this is the regional dashboard. And I just want to point out that after our initial wave, really the North Country region has enjoyed a low prevalence of this illness. Dana did point out that we had a great June, that July was not so great. I'm hoping that August will continue to be positive. But if you look at the region as a whole, we've actually done quite well since the initial wave. And the other thing I want to point out is despite what I talked about with the chronic disability and the multiple systems that are involved, at least 80% of the cases are considered non-severe. So it's important to keep that perspective. And I think as Dana talks about, you know, people without any symptoms or people with mild symptoms, we do need to remember that about 80% of people have what's considered non-severe version of this. 15% are severe and 5% are critical. And that's really what's contributing to the death rate as well as the disability we talked about. I want to switch to just talking about the question of back to school. I think this is on everyone's mind in the community and also nationally. So primary, secondary universities are all looking to, you know, to come back. I think it begs the question of why reopen? I think we're all aware that there's significant, both health and economic, impacts of not opening. And, you know, for primary and secondary schools, clearly there's a need for education. We need equal access to services. We have lots of folks in the community with disabilities. They're really not able to get the same services when they're in the home environment. And then for parents, many parents have jobs. They're an important part of the economy. And to be able to have childcare, you know, throughout the year is a real challenge that I think would have negative impacts on our economy. As far as universities, as you know, we have four colleges in our community. And if you combine them, you know, they've done studies and basically there's a $1 billion annual economic impact on the region. There's nearly 3,000 employees. And I think it's important for people to realize that many of the students are from our community. If they're not from our community, they're from our region. If they're not from our region, they're from New York State. So as we look at the primary and secondary schools, and Dana and I have been working with the school superintendents and communicating with the school nurses, I think everyone's aware that New York State put out guidance with all kinds of different sort of comprehensive features, including, you know, screening the students before they come to school, doing a hybrid of in-person and online education, looking at decompressing the classroom size and basically doing the five pillars of community response, but in a school setting. The local medical community, both Claxton, Hepburn, and St. Lawrence health system are planning to help the schools. I'm working to form a sort of pediatric and family medicine COVID response team. So if there are any cases, we'll be able to rapidly identify them and help guide the schools and the school team. And then certainly, public health. As I said, Dana's been in close touches, as has the rest of the team, to make sure that we're actively engaged and collaborative with the schools as they try and reopen. As far as the universities, there's also a fairly comprehensive New York State guidance about what safe opening would look like. And one of the things I want to emphasize is that there's the guidance, which in New York State, frankly, is much more prescriptive than what you see in other states. Testing was considered optional. But in conversations with all four of our universities, they've actually agreed to embark on what I would consider a very aggressive testing program, really to prevent any students coming to the North Country with the illness. So students are being tested even prior to arrival. Then they're being tested once they've come here. And then each of the programs, each of the universities has a surveillance testing program that's going to happen throughout the year. So I'm really excited that, again, they're going above and beyond what even New York State guidance says in order to have a safe reopening, both for their own interests, but also for the interests of the public health of the community. And then there's been, there will be significant modifications in travel. They've all changed their schedules. Sporting events and things like that are going to be substantially different or curtailed. And they've made all the same changes with their classroom and their environment. They've identified areas on campus to do quarantine. They really have comprehensive programs. And then finally, you know, enforcement. They're well aware that in dealing with the age group who tends to go to college, that, you know, at times there will be opportunities for improvement in their compliance. And all four universities have clear plans to enforce these rules. And also plans for transition to online exclusively if that should be needed. So I just want to summarize by saying that, you know, COVID clearly is a dangerous virus. It's causing severe disability and disease. It's moving across our country. Fortunately, the North Country largely has been spared. And I would argue that it has very much to do with the aggressive public health response that we saw when we identified those first cases in March. When I look back at them, I think it's entirely clear that if we hadn't had these public health measures in place, we wouldn't be dealing with not, you know, 250 or 260 cases, but, you know, potentially thousands. I do think that, you know, any intentional distraction and diminishment of the seriousness of this pandemic really ends up being counterproductive and has grave consequences. We know we have the tools to mitigate the spread of this virus and the tools that can help us safely reopen both businesses, schools, and universities. Testing is a critical component of our response. It's a rapidly evolving technology. And even as I was, you know, preparing these slides, there's a fourth kind of testing, which looks like it's going to get FDA approval. That's both going to be rapid and accurate. So the next time I talk, I'll try not to bore you, but there may be a fourth type of testing I discuss. You know, and treatment and vaccinations are already under development. And there's some signs of early progress. And then finally, I just want to emphasize that St. Lawrence County needs to continue to use what I would call our tool. that St. Lawrence County needs to continue to use what I would call our toolkit. So it's the five pillars of community response, extensive testing, the public health measures, really to prevent a second wave, to save lives and to save our economy. So that's my review.
Are there any questions? Mr. Forsythe?
Thank you. It's either for Dana or Dr. Williams. I believe you said around 24, 2500 people had been isolated and quarantined throughout this. And you also mentioned the antibody test picks up whether someone had it or not. Are they counted in the total? If someone was isolated early, has the antibody test and was positive, show signs they had it, are they counted in the number of virus cases?
Yeah, so the only cases or the way we count a case is through positive PCR testing. We don't use the antibody test to identify those who have been positive or not.
So what is the antibody test for if it's not to look for? Why would, why would someone want to do the antibody test?
So it's really to know if you've had a prior exposure or not. So, you know, if in the past you thought, gosh, I've been sick. I'm wondering if I've been exposed. People do get the test. It did help us a few months back to know what the infection rate was. So we could kind of see who had been exposed and and what was going on here in in the North Country region.
One more. You had a best guess, best case scenario guess. What percentage of people that were isolated or quarantined, would you say had it for our annual list of positive cases?
Dr. Williams, from the study you guys did with the antibody testing, what was the percentage of of the of of people who were exposed?
So when we, we did a small survey of about 600 individuals, and I believe we had a total of three who tested positive on the serologies. I should point out that that was done early in the, you know, early on when this was happening. And that if we were to repeat a survey like that, which we might consider doing, I suspect we would have a different number. But at least when we did the original survey, it was, again, like three out of 600. And to be honest with you, that was despite many people saying, you know, I had a flu like illness with no other explanation. I think many people thought they would test positive, but they didn't.
I'd just be curious if they do do it later, what the actual was. Thank you.
Mr. Denisha.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This question would be for Dr. McGuire or Dr. Williams. It's in regards to neck gaiters versus masks. I see a lot of people, and I'll reference, not my references, yesterday evening, watching a baseball game. And most of the folks were wearing neck gaiters, if they call it, over their, over their nose and mouth. What's your opinion on which is better, please?
Dana gets all the difficult questions, so Dana, you're on.
Well, so, you know, the guidance is to wear a cloth face covering. I would say the recommendation would be the one that you have to touch as least as possible and that you're able to take it on and off without touching the mask area the most. So one with ear loops and things like that, you know, does make it so. You know, if you're wearing the one that's around the neck and you're constantly putting it up and down and kind of touching the whole thing, you should really try to not touch your face, not touch the mask area as much as possible.
Okay.
Mr. Burke?
Thank you.
Dr. Williams, you you mentioned convalescent plasma. Is there an adequate supply of that? And and if not, would the antibody testing might produce more or might help to secure more? And I have another question, too, but.
Sure, well, that's that's a good question. And as I said, and this gets back to a previous question. One of the reasons to do the serologic testing is some people may be candidates to donate blood, which can then be turned into convalescent plasma. And so, yes, so that that is one reason to do the serologic testing. There's other steps that would be involved to actually become a donor. But certainly, the first step would be to document that that one had been exposed through the serologic testing.
And and I guess the other part of that question, Doctor, is there an adequate supply of the convalescent plasma?
So I believe the answer to that is there is not an adequate supply. And I can try and be in touch with the American Red Cross, who I think would be the folks who would be most, most able to answer that question. I'll see if I can get some more information.
One, one further question. When the children go back to school, do you know they are to wear masks plus social distancing when inside the classrooms, inside the school? Is that your understanding or or is that the plan?
Yeah, I mean, so the the guidance is a little bit vague. There's some discussion about during instruction, like the the times that they they may not need to wear a mask according to the guidance, as it says during instruction, which I haven't been in primary or secondary school for a while, but I believe most of the day is instruction. I actually would say that from from the experience that that we've had, that the kids will do better if they just wear a mask when they're inside or outside, not socially or not physically distanced. I think the idea of kids taking their masks on and off, on and off all day because they're maybe six feet away from somebody momentarily is not a good idea. And I would advocate that for children who are able to to do this, they should be wearing their masks except during lunch or during a designated break.
Thank you, thank you.
Mr. Arquat?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The doctors, some, I think for me and and many other people, that the the pandemic is a two phase dilemma in which, you know, the economic suffering to some equals the the health and safety suffering. And I like the inclusion of the financial aspect of it in in this latest report. And I, and I also like the fact that, you know, things like education that serves such a purpose beyond the economics are are doable. It seems doable, in your opinion, as long as we adhere to the advice of the experts that have continually drawn data. So I appreciate that part. But my my question is, a lot of, I'm assuming that we have habitories in every corner of the globe that are pursuing a vaccine. Is is there any optimism around a vaccine, in your opinion?
Yes, I I think, you know, carefully combing the 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 national and international medical literature on this, there seems to be a, you know, tremendous effort to make this happen and to make this happen quickly. A challenge with vaccines, of course, especially a vaccine that would be administered on such a large scale. And unlike vaccines, like for for shingles that are only given to a certain age group, this is a vaccine that presumably would be given to anyone who'd be agreeable to have it, no matter what the age. I think, you know, the importance of safety is just critical. And so I think there's reason for optimism. I think it'll, there'll be vaccine available soon. But what, how you define soon is is your choice.
All right, I'll just follow up by saying when we get to the other side of this, a terrible dilemma, I look forward to seeing you playing that guitar on that that nice chair that's behind you there. Thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other questions? Seeing none? Thank you, doctors. We appreciate it. Very informative. And we don't like the topic, but we certainly like hearing from you.
Thank you.
Now is the time for communications.
A thank you card was received from Sidney Jarvis of Norway North Fork Central School, making the board for the Capitol District by betting scholarship of $250. Sidney will be attending parts of the university.
Thank you. Any citizen wanting to address the board is asked to stand at the microphone during the time they address the board. The address will be limited to a time of five minutes. Please state your name before beginning your address. Is there anybody in the audience or anybody on Zoom that wishes to address the board? Seeing none, we will move on to the presentation of resolution by Mr. Sheridan.
Mr. Chairman, I have a resolution authorizing the chair to sign a contract with Health Research, HRI for COVID-19 Response and modifying 2020 budget for the public health department. I move for its adoption.
Is there a second by Mr. Curran? Is there any discussion? Is that your hand up, Mr. Burke? You're muted. I guess not. Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Carrie? Mr. Sheridan?
Chairman, I have a resolution for claiming August.
Wait, just a second. No. Is it supposed to be a roll call?
Modifying is the word probably should be.
Yes, second question. Yes, I apologize, it's not hard.
Okay, this will have to be a roll call vote, the resolution that we just had. So it's called roll, please.
Perkins?
Yes.
Akers?
Yes.
Betty?
Yes.
Yes.
Yaco?
Yes.
Burke?
Yes.
Arquat?
Yes.
Terminelli?
Yes.
Curran?
Yes.
Reagan?
Yes.
Forsythe?
Yes.
Lightfoot?
Yes.
Sheridan?
Yes.
Smithers?
Yes.
Denisha?
Yes.
Fifteen yes.
Resolution's carried, Mr. Sheridan?
Mr. Chairman, I have a resolution authorizing the chair to sign a contract with Hillside Children's Center for Re-Recruitment of Adopted Families and Children Foster Care and move for its adoption.
Seconded by Mr. Forsythe, Ms. Curran, and Ms. Terminelli. Any discussion? Mr. Reagan, did you ever hand that up? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Carrie? Mr. Sheridan?
Chairman, I have a resolution authorizing the chair to sign a contract with Hillside Children's Center for Re-Recruitment of Adopted Families and Children Foster Care and move for its adoption.
Seconded by Mr. Forsythe, Ms. Curran, and Ms. Terminelli. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Carrie? Mr. Denisha?
Mr. Chairman, I offer a resolution authorizing the chair to sign a contract with North Country Housing Council Incorporated to deliver a countywide housing re-rotation program around three, move for its adoption.
Seconded by Mr. Akers and Ms. Terminelli. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Carrie? Mr. Denisha?
Mr. Chairman, I offer a resolution reauthorizing the North Country Home Consortium with the counties of Jefferson, Lewis, for the purpose of obtaining home investment partnership program funds from the US Department of Housing and Urban Development and move for its adoption.
Is there a second?
Second.
Ms. Curran and Mr. Sheridan? Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Carrie? Mr. Akers?
Mr. Chairman, I offer a resolution authorizing the forgiveness of interest companies and fees on a certain parcel of land to be obtained by the town of Lewisville. I move this resolution.
Seconded by Mr. Forsythe and Mr. Arquat. Any discussion? Mr. Akers?
I had to introduce this resolution because I'm the finance chair, but I will not be supporting it. The reasons for this is that the town of Lewisville would like these $900 in fees and interest excluded from the purchase of this property. I believe they took out on the property, they didn't allow this to go to the fair sale. They entered into a business agreement with the owner of this property. Therefore, these fees are part of the purchase price. The argument made by the senior attorney Eric Gethison said that there are line of site issues and that the debris and clutter of this parcel would interfere with playground activities. I'm familiar with this area. The woods of this lot that the town of Lewisville is interested in purchasing is about a quarter of a mile away from the ball fields. Also, Route 39 is, County Route 39 is of limited traffic. And if indeed there are line of site issues on the side though that enters on to Route 39, they can easily pare back the trees further than there are now. I will not be supporting this. We've had a policy of municipalities that we did this in Rick Perkins in Parrishville. He had a property that the municipality wanted. We enforced the rules, we made them pay the fees and interest. And I think we need to be consistent in asking and forcing the town of Lewisville to do the same.
Mr. Arquat?
Thanks, Mr. Chairman. The leadership in the town of Lewisville represented a a health concern. Mr. Akers just described it as a low traffic area. It only takes one car. I'll be supporting the resolution.
Thank you. Mr. Akers?
Is there a roll call, Mr. Chairman?
Roll call, roll call, please.
Akers?
No.
Betty?
Yes.
Agger?
Yes.
Yaco?
Yes.
Burke?
Yes.
Arquat?
Yes.
Terminelli?
Yes.
Curran?
No.
Reagan?
No.
Forsythe?
No.
Lightfoot?
No.
Sheridan?
No.
Smithers?
No.
Denisha?
Yes.
Perkins? Seven yes, eight, eight no.
The resolution fails. Mr. Akers?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I offer a resolution for the workers' compensation self insurance portionment for the year 2021 and move this resolution.
Is there a second by Mr. Forsythe and Ms. Curran? Is there any discussion? Mr. Reagan?
I just wanted to be added as a second.
So noted. Any discussion?
Betty?
Yes.
Yes.
Yaco?
Yes.
Burke?
Yes.
Arquat?
Yes.
Terminelli?
Yes.
Curran?
Yes.
Reagan?
Yes.
Forsythe?
Yes.
Lightfoot?
Yes.
Sheridan?
Yes.
Smithers?
Yes.
Denisha?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Akers?
Yes.
Fifteen yes.
Resolution passed. Mr. Akers?
Mr. Chairman, I offer a resolution authorizing the chair to sign an agreement with New York Power Authority for installation of a culvert on Route 39 to facilitate the Smart Pass Moses Adrona Transmission Lines Project and to modifying the 2020 budget for the Department of Highways. I move this resolution.
Is there a second by Mr. Forsythe? I'd like to recognize Mr. Chambers at this time to address this resolution.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Lightfoot. If I could ask this resolution to be tabled to next month, I would appreciate it. The Power Authority has requested, well, maybe looking at another way to address the wildlife that this culvert was going to address. And therefore, wildlife that this culvert was going to address, and therefore this culvert may not be needed. But another month would give us the time to maybe figure out if the D E C or the NICA will actually need this culvert for a process.
Thank you. Mr. Arquat?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to abstain from conversation and reduce myself.
So noted. Mr. Akers?
I would move to table this resolution.
Is there a second? Seconded by Ms. Curran, Mr. Perkins, Mr. Denisha, Mr. Forsyte, Mr. Reagan, and Mr. Akers, and Mr. Fay. Mr. Sheridan? Any discussion on tabling the resolution until the next finance committee meeting, Mr. Chambers?
That would be fine, sir.
Yes.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The resolution is tabled. Mr. Akers?
Mr. Chairman, I offer a resolution approving a supplemental agreement number two with McFarland Johnson for additional services for the South Shore Railroad Bridge over the Asagachi River, pin number 334940, pin number 775371, I move this resolution.
Is there a second by Mr. Denisha and Mr. Reagan? Any discussion? Ms. Curran?
I just, it's a $15,000 change order. Is it just part of the job?
Chambers, go.
Go ahead, Mr. Chambers.
Thank you.
Yes, primarily this is due to an issue with the, one of the abutments. The boring for finding the bedrock gave us an elevation. However, the bedrock, instead of being relatively level, is on approximately a 45-degree angle and needed to redesign the footing for the bridge. So it's a change order necessary for the project, but we'll still maintain the project budget and it will be funded 95% by the federal and state government.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Carrie? Mr. Akers?
Mr. Chairman, I offer a resolution modifying the 2020 solid waste department budget for overtime and move this resolution.
Is there a second by Ms. Curran and Mr. Arquat? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Yes.
Diaco?
Yes.
Burke?
Yes.
Arquat?
Yes.
Terminelli?
Yes.
Curran?
Yes.
Reagan?
Yes.
Forsyte?
Yes.
Lightfoot?
Yes.
Sheridan?
Yes.
Smithers?
Yes.
Denisha?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Akers?
Yes.
Fay?
Yes.
Fifteen yes.
Resolution's carried, Mr. Akers?
Mr. Chairman, I offer a resolution authorizing the chair to sign a contract with Northern Lights Healthcare Partnership, Inc., for home care services in the expanded in-home services for the elderly program. I move this resolution.
Is there a second by Mr. Forsyte and Ms. Hager? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie? Mr. Akers?
Mr. Chairman, I proudly offer this resolution in opposition to New York Senate Bill, Senate Bill 8676, an Assembly Bill, Assembly 1078, which would require police officers to maintain private liability insurance and exclude police officers from provisions provided defense and indemnification, I move this resolution.
Seconded by Mr. Forsyte, Mr. Sheridan, Mr. Smithers, Mr. Denisha, Ms. Curran, and Mr. Perkins. Mr. Reagan? And Mr. Are you, want to make a comment, Tony? Are you, seconding, seconding? And Mr. Arquat? Is there any discussion? Mr. Smithers?
In regard to Watertown Times editorial last Friday, which I believe is a mischaracterization of our intent and contains factual errors, I feel like I need to defend this body and our position on this. They say changes are necessary, St. Lawrence legislators should embrace reforms for policing and call our views short-sighted. I'm not sure if they even read the resolutions. They seem to begin their information from a story published by the Courier-Observer. They say some lawmakers approve the resolution. I think they missed some of the whereas's. And so in defense or to explain this, I offer the following. I don't know if they pay attention to me or not, but I don't know who wrote it because their names aren't attached, some editor, editors, but I believe they misunderstood our purpose of these two resolutions. We heard from our sheriff as he detailed the changes in procedures currently being reviewed as well as his expression of current feelings of employment as a law enforcement officer. We've seen and heard as police are being physically and verbally assaulted across probation, none would disagree that individuals who commit crimes should be prosecuted and not immune from punishment. We currently have in this county a large physical and financial commitment to social services. I say that because they suggest taking money from the police and beefing up social services. And are we going to sit quietly by while some legislators in Albany want to require law enforcement officers to carry private liability insurance? Who then might be next to be held personally liable in performance of their job? I don't believe it's this body that's being short-sighted and it urges us to remain united in support of these two resolutions.
Thank you, Mr. Smithers. Anyone else?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Sherman, go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, I'll be in favor of Mr. Akers' resolution opposing this New York State's Assembly Bills that would exclude law enforcement, that would exclude law enforcement officers from the qualified immunity doctrine. Having experienced 25 years with the New York State Department of Corrections with left 19 years in the supervisor position, I've seen more than my fair share of frivolous lawsuits on staff. The cost to the state taxpayer that I retired 12 years ago, so I say it was enormous. The cost to state taxpayers is enormous and a lot of expense to deal with these lawsuits. And our police officers and our local municipalities should not be burdened with that expense. Instead of mandating new headaches and problems for our police, we should be proud and thankful for the people that are in law enforcement, put themselves in danger for us every day. And every day they go off to work, at any given time they may be faced with making life and death split-second decisions in order to protect their own safety or for others. So none of them are getting rich that I know of. So with all that's going on now with the violence and sensationalism we have seen recently on TV, we should have their backs like they've had our backs for an awful long time. So I'll be supporting this resolution. I also believe that this resolution would be something that would discourage people from embarking on a career in police work as well. So I'll be voting for it.
Thank you, Mr. Sheridan. Mr. Akers?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think Mr. Sheridan and Mr. Smithers covered what I decided I was going to bring up, and I thank them for this work.
You're welcome. If I, go ahead, Mr. Akers.
The, I just want to echo some of what Mr. Smithers said. The idea that the editorial board at the Watertown Times would criticize this body for its position on this particular legislation is very surprising and disappointing to me. As someone who spent their career writing editorials, the idea that a major publication in northern New York would be in support of this kind of legislation is very disappointing. And the, you know, I think it's important that the public understand that, that no one in this room is against legitimate reforms that improve the ability of our law enforcement community to protect and serve the people of the North Country. But the idea of no longer defending our law enforcement community when they are sued would hamstring their ability to function because, as Mr. Sheridan has said, it is not unusual for frivolous lawsuits to be filed against them and there are current procedures in place to ensure that when citizens have questions or have complaints or decide to sue, the cases are reviewed and the courts can be very stiff in their punishments of communities that are not vigilant about ensuring that their law enforcement officers toe the line. And this kind of legislation simply would discourage people from becoming law enforcement officers and from putting their lives on the line to protect our communities. And the idea of requiring law enforcement to get private liability insurance is just outrageous and illustrates a lack of understanding of how law enforcement works and a lack of understanding of what we as communities need to be doing in order to have active law enforcement agencies that are willing, whose members are willing to protect our community. So thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you, Mr. Akers, for introducing this bill. And anytime that I or other am subject to criticism for supporting our law enforcement community, I'm more than happy to accept that criticism.
Anyone else? Ms. Hager?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to say that I am also going to support this resolution. That being said, I believe that addressing reforms and social justice and supporting our local law enforcement in our county and in the state, shout out to the Pottstown Police Department, by the way, are not mutually exclusive. Thank you.
Anyone else? You know, much like what we've seen some of these demonstrations due to the, to the people that are performing them, the rioting, the property damage, the fires, the bricks, the slingshots, and all of this stuff that goes along with it, really detracts from the message that Black Lives Matter wanted to get out when this started. Their feelings towards a black man who was essentially killed while in the hands of a police department. I think that they make themselves look rather cheap, rather ridiculous. I would bet that half of the people that are doing the rioting now don't have any idea the name of that man. And I think that the Watertown Times is taking a little dip in the cesspool by coming up with an editorial critical of what this board saw fit to profess, and that is their support for the police in New York, in St. Lawrence County, all of the police that we deal with. Now, I will grant you that I've certainly seen some things in my time that warrant an adverse reaction to some police procedures. By and large, those are so far in the minority, they wouldn't register if you asked for a percent of complaints that people make as a result of everyday contacts with the police. And look at it this way, when are the police called? When somebody needs them, when somebody's in trouble, when somebody's had an accident, when somebody gets assaulted, when somebody's house gets broken into, when somebody gets raped, that's when the police are called. Those are not great circumstances. Add that to the family complaints that they get called to. And I can tell you, those are the worst to go to. So I'm really a little bit more than upset. I'm troubled by the Watertown Times putting this kind of trite in its newspaper, and that's probably one of the reasons why I don't subscribe to it, because I don't like reading this crap. Thank you. Anyone else? Mr. Burke?
Well, I certainly agree with you, Joe, that it's a small percentage of police that give, that give the whole effort a bad name. But I guess I would also say that it's a small percentage of protesters who give, who give a bad name to all of them. And, and again, you know, I think about the stop and frisk in New York City, you know? I mean, how would it be, how would it be like to be a black man walking in New York City and not sure you can walk two blocks without being stopped and frisked? And I know it's over, but, but I'm going to tell you, we need to have a sensitivity to the bigger picture. We're extremely fortunate in northern New York to have what I believe is a great police presence. But, but I don't know that we should, I don't know that we, that that gives us reason to be insensitive to all the protesters that see it differently. Thank you.
Mr. Arquat?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll be supporting this resolution because my priority is representing St. Lawrence County. And although that is our task, if we have a message that our constituents want to be sent nationally or at the state level through us, I believe that that's our responsibility as well. But I've received no indication from the people that I represent to send that message. So I think this once again represents legislation that is non-applicable for St. Lawrence County, and I appreciate all that our law enforcement folks do for us here in the North Country. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Arquat. Anyone else? Mr. Reagan?
I just want to emphasize that the individuals who have participated in the Black Lives Matter rallies and marches in St. Lawrence County are to be commended for the way they have acted during those events. I think they have sent a message of their concerns, the way that the founders of this country intended. They've been a great example to others around the country of the right way to They've been a great example to others around the country of the right way to make their views known to the public and to the government. And I think all of us in this room appreciate, you know, the right of the public to make its views known and to exercise their first amendment rights. And I think that our criticism of this legislation has nothing to do with our views on peaceful protests.
Thank you, Mr. Reagan. Anyone else? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie? Mr. Akers?
Mr. Chairman, I proudly offer a resolution discouraging local units of government from defunding or abolishing their police departments and move this resolution.
Seconded by Ms. Curran, Mr. Perkins, Mr. Deniesha, Mr. Sheridan, Mr. Forsyte, Mr. Reagan, and Mr. Arquat. Any discussion? Prior to the vote, I would like to be added to this as a co-sponsor as well as the last resolution. Mr. Deniesha?
As would I, Mr. Chairman.
As would Mr. Deniesha. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie? Mr. Akers?
Mr. Chairman, I offer a resolution modifying the 2020 budget for the county administrator's office for costs associated with the court order services at New York State-operated inpatient mental hygiene facilities. I move this resolution.
Is there a second? Ms. Curran and Mr. Perkins? Any discussion?
Yes.
Mr. Akers?
Just want to point out, as the county administrator has pointed out to us, that this is a shifting of a mandated cost that was, was shared by the state. It's now, it's going to have to be 100% locally funded. It's a cost shift from Albany to us.
Mr. Deniesha?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just to echo Mr. Akers, you know, this is, this is just another, another unfunded mandate that's passed down to us from Albany. And, you know, it's like the AIM funding, Albany eliminated the AIM funding from Albany budget, but saw to it that the counties had to pick up the cost. So this is just another, another shell game, shifting costs, and at the same time blaming local governments for being irresponsible. I will not support this.
Seeing none, all, excuse me, roll call, please.
Tiago?
Yes.
Burke?
Yes.
Arquat?
Yes.
Terminelli?
Yes.
Curran?
No.
Reagan?
Yes.
Forsyte? Leifah?
No.
Sheridan?
No.
Smithers?
Yes.
Deniesha?
No.
Perkins?
Yes.
Akers?
No.
Fay?
Yes.
Agar?
Yes.
Ten yes, five no.
Resolution? Mr. Akers?
Mr. Chairman, I offer a resolution, amending resolution number 197-2013, extending the authorization of St. Lawrence County to impose an additional 1% of sales and compensating youth taxes. I move this resolution.
Is there a second? Ms. Curran, Mr. Perkins? Seeing none, all in favor? Oh, excuse me, Ms. Curran.
Can I add a co-sponsor, please?
Remove that, yes. Anyone else? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie? Mr. Akers?
Chairman, I offer a resolution authorizing the chair to sign the leasing agreement for Patty Farley's building, which is based in the Village of Governor Art at 99 West Main Street. I move this resolution.
Is there a second? Ms. Curran? Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie? Mr. Akers?
Mr. Chairman, I offer a resolution adopting the local law for the year 2020 for setting salaries for the county employees. I move this resolution.
Is there a second? Second by Mr. Perkins and Ms. Curran and Mr. Arquat. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Mr. Perkins, would you present this resolution, please, the next one?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I, I have a resolution authorizing the filling of vacancies and move for its adoption.
Is there a second? By Mr. Akers and Ms. Curran? Any discussion? Mr. Burke?
This is the filling of all vacancies, right, that are listed here?
I'm sorry, could you repeat that, Mr. Burke?
We're on the, we're on the agenda item that deals with the filling of about a dozen or so vacancies.
That's correct.
I have a question about one. The social services attorney, I see a 30-day wait. I'm going to repeat my concerns that I previously expressed at the last meeting, the fact that we are in a crisis mode, my opinion, with DSS Legal. We have, we've had over 100% turnover in staff since last November. I believe we're at 50% staffing now, and, and I'm, I'm really concerned, and, and I would like, at, at some, I would like to know what we're doing to immediately fill these items because there is a direct correlation to the health and safety of children in the county. The attorneys play a pivotal role in, in the, in removing children from imminent danger. And it's, it's not an item, or it's not a series of items, that we can be complacent about. And, you know, and it, and it certainly begs the question, why is there such turnover in that department? What are the exit interviews saying? How many do we currently have in the queue for, for potential interview? You know, I, I'm, I'm very concerned about this, and again, it's a crisis situation. And, and I don't, and then I look at 30, 60, 90 days, we're still delaying, we're still delaying positions, we're sitting on $30 million, $30 million in the fund balance. Yet, yet, we are prepared not to give the resources needed to protect the children of the county. All these items that are listed here, I'm assuming, and believe, all those items to be needed. They are part of the services that we are mandated to provide. Why are we still doing 30, 60, 90 days? Are we, are we shooting for 35 million? If they're responsible? And, and I'd like some answers. I, I feel that this is, this is very inappropriate. We are, we are failing our core mission to provide quality services.
Mr. Akers?
I call a question.
Is there a second by, by Mr. Forsyte and Ms. Curran? All in favor of calling the question?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Yes.
Yes.
Two opposed?
Three.
Three opposed?
Three thousand and fifty.
Okay. Four opposed? Five opposed? Okay. Any opposed in this room? Six opposed. Six opposed, John. I would say this, is that a committee of legislators and...
Question the discussion.
You going to interrupt me?
Robert's rules, I believe, indicates that a call...
Well, I will allow it, I'm just asking you, you want to interrupt what I'm saying? Go ahead. Go ahead, Tony.
No, there's no dis, we've had a call to question, there's no discussion, that's what I intervened.
I understand that. Okay. All in favor of calling the question?
I already voted.
We already voted. Seeing?
So now we go on to the, the resolution.
Right. And that's what I was speaking to, was the resolution.
No, we don't go on, we don't go on to the resolution, you failed to get the two-thirds majority. Point of order. It requires the two-thirds majority to close, to close the discussion.
I think that's correct.
Stand by.
Check it out.
Mr. Akers did that at the last meeting. It's not going to be allowed.
Hold, hold off, John, until the county attorney renders a decision.
Mr. Burke is correct. It will require two-thirds.
All right, so it fails, okay? And we will continue with whatever the debate is here. Mr. Arquat?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think Mr. Burke brings up, you know, a very legitimate concern. You know, we all know that we're financially stressed. We were, we were stressed before the pandemic, and, and we all understand that. But I think with recent incidents, that we realized that in that particular department that Mr. Burke is referencing, that we're extremely understaffed, to the degree that I'm not certain that we're not understaffed below the mandated level by the state or, or federal government in that department. And the fact that, that there's children out there that, that are not being taken care of properly is, is a strong concern, but even from a financial standpoint, if, if we continue on the path that we're heading in that particular department without staffing properly, there will be a financial consequence as well. And I, I think these, these concerns are legitimate, I think they need to be addressed immediately, and, and I think that's really what Mr. Burke was trying to exemplify. I appreciate your opportunity.
Thank you, Mr. Arquat. Mr. Fay?
I am serving on vacancy committee when this was passed, timeline to 30 days. I think there's been some changes, I stand to be corrected, on responsibility to some social service attorneys. So basically, I believe this position should be filled immediately afterwards.
Mr. Chairman, can I speak to that?
Tony Minus, here.
So, the position in question on the resolution this evening was vacated on July 10th. So currently, I believe there are four applications pending. What we want to do, by indicating the distance between the likelihood of the position being filled and the time that the position's gone vacant in the department since July 10th, the vacancy committee discussed, it's very likely that position approved tonight may or may not be filled by August 10th. So that would be 30 days that the department went without an attorney. And in all of these, when we look back at the date that it became vacant, we seek to make sure the boards inform how many days that position's been vacant. So I believe they are recruiting, I believe a new attorney started today, I believe also another attorney finished at the lab department last week. So I believe that there are efforts, and we continue to put efforts toward getting these positions filled, but we certainly, Mr. Burke can address these more specifically once the opportunity to review the application and interview process is conducted.
Ms. Terminelli?
I have a question. I've, I've been involved in the vacancy review process in the past, and at the meetings that I was at, it was the department head that brought forward the positions or the vacancies that they were requesting to fill. How does that work in a department that doesn't have a current department head, or a commissioner in this case, to bring those cases? So if, when, when there's that gap in a leadership, how are those vacancies moved forward?
There's a, not a standard practice. If there is the ability for the department unit supervisor to come, sometimes that occurs, sometimes they're unavailable, sometimes I'll receive the information from department staff and provide that. There's a variety of ways, I wouldn't say there's one standard approach that's taken, but we do the best to get all the information before the committee.
So just to clarify, positions can still be moved forward through vacancy, vacancy committee when we're lacking a department head or a supervisor?
Absolutely.
Is there anyone else that wishes to speak before I call on Mr. Burke again? Mr. Akers?
So, with Mrs. Doyle, so essentially, the 30 days would be up by the August 10th date, correct?
That's correct. It can be filled, the 11.
Thank you very much.
Anyone else that hasn't spoken yet?
And I would also just add to that, the position that's most recently become vacant will not have to come back before you because it was not a permanent position, the provisional period was still underway, so that position will come back to me by vacancy and can be refilled without additional action of the board.
Mr. Burke?
Well, let me preface this by saying that I, I have, I have tremendous respect for our staff, but I'm going to tell you that, that the, the response to the filling of these items has not been good. It has been over nine months, and we've averaged about a 50% vacancy rate in our attorney staffing. That is not acceptable, especially when children's welfare is at stake. It's not acceptable. I don't care, I mean, forget to talk about the 30, 60, 90 days, we need somebody there tomorrow. We, you know, and whatever it takes, whatever it takes, I'm only one vote, but I can assure you, if you come back with a plan to say, I can get three more attorneys if we do this, I'll, I'll guarantee you, you'll have my support, and I believe you'll have the support of others. The consequences are too serious. The consequences are too serious not to have a rapid response. And it is not a success story when we look at nine months and averaging a 50% rate. And then I see on our vacancy thing, we've got a 90-day wait on the deputy commissioner. Once again, I mean, hopefully, we'll be hiring a new commissioner, maybe tonight or whenever. And that commissioner, who is brand-new, is gonna need support, not 90 days from now. You know, those arbitrary numbers fail to address the needs and our core mission of providing good services.
Is there anyone else? Mr. Forsythe.
Yeah, actually, the nine will be 30 days, I believe, 31, 41. I have no problem pushing this resolution forward. I understand, John. I understand theoretically. But I don't think if you bring someone on tomorrow or last week, they're gonna be up to snuff to help the Department of Social Services, the new head, in any meaningful way that I'm aware of. There's gotta be a learning curve of some sort. And if we're making a lot of five or six days, I'm ready to vote on this tonight. And move down to the next floor.
Tony Minister.
To clarify, the deputy commissioner has been vacant since March 31st, when the deputy moved into the commissioner position for an interim period. So that 90 days would have already been exceeded and could be filled as soon as they would like to hire.
Is there anyone else that hasn't spoken? Mr. Arquhart.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And again, I think that, you know, the urgency represents, and John had tried to indicate earlier, that whatever it takes to draw those people that are ready to go and if it's higher scale wage level, then that's what needs to happen. And I think I want to remind everybody, my colleagues, taxpayers, anybody concerned with the cost, which we all should be, that these positions are highly reimbursable.
Thank you. Anyone else? Mr. Akers.
I'd just say that the vacancy committee for all these positions over the years that we've been doing this in this state and the renewal of the base has been working quite well. Usually five members in there, rarely are there three, two votes. Usually it's unanimous. But you have the county administrator, you have the assistant county administrator, usually somebody Stephanie or Johnny from payroll. And you have at least the attempt is made to have two legislators rotate through. It isn't bipartisan. It could be two Republicans, it could be two Democrats, it could be one of each. It has worked actually quite well. I think the immediate fill rate in the past year was in the upper 80%. Is that would be correct, county administrator, Mrs. Doyle?
Yes, 89, I believe.
89%. So this board and this administration are not shirking their duty. Understand with the news and the... You know, we have a deafened governor, whether that's related to legal or maybe the lack of CPS or whatever. Maybe mandates made by the state. But it's not a civil of incompetency or delay or concern about money or the health of the children that we serve. So I want to thank Ruth Doyle for putting this, urging this vacancy committee back into effect. Here's been going for two, three, maybe four years now. Time flies. But I think that it's worked very well so that at least a couple legislators are involved in discussions in depth with the department head and are hearing proposals. So it's very rarely, it's very rare that the department head is denied or delayed.
Mr. Reagan.
I just also like to point out to the public that it wasn't that long ago that this board has added six additional positions to assist social services in working on child protective cases. And, you know, we saw a problem and we hired the additional people to address that problem because there was a problem in the case loads, there was a problem in our ability to respond. And I think that the county appropriately added additional positions to help address that and added positions directly involved in identifying families who are having serious problems and who have the power to take children out of dangerous situations. And the additional six positions is a big increase in that very difficult job. So the county has been working overtime to address and fix our ability to make sure that when someone calls and says that there is a child in trouble, that we have people who are able to respond and get them out of danger. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Reagan. Anybody else? Anybody who hasn't spoken? Mr. Arquhart.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Akers and Mr. Reagan are both right in their assessments of what's transpired there. I'm not calling the procedure into question. I'm calling the need, the need into question. We have a stronger need there than I think we were all aware. That's what's being called into question. By no means the process, by no means what's been happening over the last couple of years. It's the need that's been uncovered. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Burke.
Just one other thing to add on to Tony's comment. Nobody's faulting child protection workers. It requires to take a child out of imminent danger, it requires court action. It requires the coordination between child protective workers, the caseworkers, and the attorneys. It's not a... So to say that we've added child protection workers, I commend the county for doing that. It was much needed. Especially in view of the fact that we've gone from 155 to about 320 in the last five years for children in placement. 100%, increase. So keep in mind that it's not just the child protection workers. The pivotal action is in the courts, in the removal. And that requires sufficient legal staff. Thank you.
Thank you. I think we beat this horse enough tonight.
I called the question earlier.
Well, if there are no more questions, I would ask for the vote. I don't see any more hands go up. All those in favor? Of the resolution? Any opposed? I think you just had a unanimous vote in favor. Is that okay? We're good? Thank you. The resolution passes. Mr. Akers.
Mr. Chairman, I offer a resolution appointing an interim St. Lawrence County historian. I move this resolution.
Is there a second? Second by Mr. Smithers, Ms. Curran, and Mr. Sheridan. There is a amendment to that resolution that requires a name. And if someone would offer the amendment, Nancy would favor. Yeah, all this is a name, adding that to the resolution. Mr. Akers, seconded by Mr. Forsythe. Now we have a resolution with a name. All those in favor of the resolution with the name of Nancy would favor? Signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Carry. Mr. Akers.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, I offer a resolution appointing the commissioner of social services for St. Lawrence County. And I filled in the names of Cynthia Ackerman at a salary of $109,347.
Is there a second? Ms. Curran, Mr. Sheridan, and Mr. Forsythe? And, excuse me, Ms. Taggart.
No.
You got your hand up.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman. I was trying to recuse.
Okay.
Okay, sorry.
So we've got a motion on the floor. It's been seconded. Mr. Akers.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to add an amendment to this. After the now therefore be a resolve, I would like to add, be a further resolve that upon a successful six-month review by the county administrator, there will be a salary increase to ban seven, step eight.
Is there a second to that amendment by Mr. Forsythe, Ms. Curran, Ms. Germanelli? Any discussion as to the amendment? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carry. The amendment is carried back to the resolution. Is... Mr. Reagan.
Mr. Chairman, could we ask the county administrator to explain to the public a little bit about the credentials of the proposed commissioner of social services?
County Administrator?
I don't know if I'm vulgar, I apologize. Ms. Ackerman is coming to us from the Ark of Jefferson in St. Lawrence. She has been with them, I believe, for the latter part of 17 years. Certainly can provide you with more information. We shared the resume with you on Google Drive today. She has background in areas of disabilities and also the populations that's well-served by the housing programs that the auto provides. That's what she oversees at this time. She has over 200 employees, I believe, and oversees a variety of programs between both Jefferson County and St. Lawrence County.
Go ahead.
And could you share that resume with the press as well? And I think, I like the matter of the search committee. This is a difficult position to fill. And the Mrs. Ackerman brings a great deal of expertise in working with many kinds of people and many a vast area. And I think she brings a lot of strength to us. And I just want to congratulate the search committee on their efforts.
Thank you, Mr. Reagan. Mr. Forsythe?
Yeah, I'd like to reiterate, I was on the search committee. Ms. Ackerman has been on very well, had a very good resume. MBA also, I believe she had. Anyone that would want to take this job in this trying times, God bless you. I think she'll do a wonderful job and that just shows me her leadership style. So I look forward to her taking the role on and I wish her the best of luck.
Ms. Germanelli.
I wanted to thank the search committee for their work on this. I know it was difficult and you had several candidates to look at. I just have a question. In the past, when we've brought on department heads, they've sometimes had a one-year probationary period. And I see that the term of this appointment is for five years. Is there a one-year probationary period or is it just the six months and the step increase on the salary?
The term is by appointment, but the probationary period is between two and 12 months.
Anyone else?
If I could just mention her timeline for arrival.
Go ahead.
So Mrs. Ackerman will finish her work at the Ark of Jefferson in St. Lawrence on Friday. And she will be joining us on Monday, August 17th. She will be stopping by tomorrow afternoon to have a tour of the facility and hopefully meet residents back. She's very eager to get started, should she be informed.
Anyone else? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carry. Mr. Denisha.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I offer a resolution setting a date for a public hearing. A proposal of a law D number should be determined for the year 2020. And then a proposal of D for the year 2018, which is setting policies on acquisitions and sale of tax-linked property.
Is there a second? Second by Ms. Curran and Ms. Germanelli. Any discussion? Mr. Denisha.
Yeah, just briefly, Mr. Chairman, I think this is, you know, this helps to address one of the issues that I believe that certain folks at high accounting can, so it, you know, it's not perfect. It's, I believe it's a good... I think it's a good compromise.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carry. County administrators before.
So I'll start with a brief COVID-19 update. We are, as an enforcement team, up to 575 complaints through the New York phone calls. I would say probably tipping close to 600 when you count the ones that reported to you that are now coming through our new website and/or phone calls received by any of the offices of the members of the team. So we're doing our best to respond to those. We have seen a dramatic decrease in the big-box retailers, I believe they're referred to, the Walmarts and Lowe's. We are seeing more focused on mask-wearing individuals entering and leaving establishments, social distancing, certainly being the summertime gatherings that we are told about prior to the occurrence of those. Makes it a little bit challenging, but also responding to when we have a name provided, often complaints come through anonymous. We are responding to those and making contact when necessary. To date, we have not initiated any fines. And we continue, as we have reported previously, that after two complaints, we are sending a communication. And after three, we are sending one of the sheriff's deputies out to make contact, to educate and to raise awareness. We probably have seen the most steady timeline now in the last few weeks of things not changing again, requirements not increasing. So that's given folks an ample opportunity, I think, to respond, to make sure that folks coming in and leaving. I have it on, in one of the stores in Potsdam, walked in, I had my mask on, the clerk said theirs on, someone walked in without one. They were promptly asked, "Let the store come back with their masks." So we're hearing stories like that of folks enforcing measures that are required by New York State at this time. As just a precursor of what we're seeing over the weekend, last weekend, we saw 28 from Friday until Sunday evening. This weekend, we saw 16. So a little bit of a decrease there. I did want to mention and kind of follow on to Dr. Williams' statement earlier about the schools and the plans that the schools have submitted to New York State for consideration. As you might imagine, a large number of county staff have school-aged children. And I think that it's going to be important, currently, as a parent of school-aged children myself, it creates a great deal of anxiety and stress anticipating what will be the schedule for our children. So what I'd like to do, once those plans have been approved, I would like to assemble a committee, small committee of staff, to take a look at these issues. We shouldn't force our employees to choose between being a parent and being an employee. And figure out a way, certainly daycare in St. Lawrence County was a struggle prior to COVID-19. Now it's gonna be an even greater demand and the requirements to have daycare... Now it's going to be an even greater demand, and the requirements to have daycare are going to be even greater. So the struggle that's coming to us in the next four to five weeks is going to be quite a challenge. And I would like to be able to bring back to you some options to consider. We continue to work in somewhat of a flexible work environment to maintain those densities at a safe level. We have completed the modifications necessary between staff and both directional and as far as the limiting contact, place plexiglass in places, things of that nature. That's all completed. But I think this is a different challenge for our staff. As we head into the next few months and school begins and the challenges that we face with scheduling, it's going to be, place great demand on our staff. So I would like to bring you some information on that and also an understanding of what that might look like, so that the board can make a determination. Next, I would mention that vacancy review is scheduled for tomorrow at 1:00 PM. There are 12 positions to be considered. There are three that are abolish and create positions. There are three temporary positions to be considered, as well as eight departments that are represented. And one of the things that I'd both like to keep our department heads apprised of, as well as the board, is at any given time per month, what we look at for vacancies. And currently, out of our 806 positions excluding the temporary positions, there are 58 positions that either are in the process of, perhaps may not be vacant quite yet, but are being considered for review and potential fill, or some version of that. So that committee will meet at 1:00 o'clock tomorrow. Legislator Haggard and Terminelli will be joining us. I do believe that this will be one of the most challenging budget years, not unlike 2016, when I took over as administrator. We begin budget reviews in earnest tomorrow with departments. You may recall a finance committee in June, and I mentioned to you, we were changing the budget schedule as far as the meetings with the budget team. On a weekly basis, we're going to determine if it's safe to meet in person or meet much like this environment on Zoom. We're going to start the budget reviews on Zoom with the departments coming in, much like UCI committee. And on a weekly basis, take a look at that, take a look at our numbers. We're very fortunate at this time to only have had two cases very early on on county staff. But we certainly would want to increase the opportunity for the budget team to become symptomatic and/or any of our departments. So being sensitive to that, I think that it's going to be a challenge for us because a lot of the dialogue and debate that occurs by being in person is very different when you're on a Zoom environment, things you may think of or think to have a discussion about. So we're going to try it, but it's going to be a fluid process. I do, as I always have, invite all of you. The schedule will be posted on Google Drive if you'd like to attend any particular department or all of them. We can send you the Zoom invite, or you're welcome to stop in. We can make arrangements to make sure you have access to those conversations. So those will begin tomorrow, and those will go through August 27th for the first round of all the departments coming in to meet the budget team. And then we begin the process of review, which may require additional conversations with departments, as it typically does. And then we'll begin putting the documents together so that I can present the intended budget for 2021. I wanted to give you an update on two areas that we'd like to bring to you, most likely in the budget, because we're overdue in bringing you a response. If you recall, in November of 2019, there was an immediate decision the board had to make about taking over the Canton location for the nutrition center and the services that were provided at the high-rise. So when that, and the board provided support to take that over, and it's gone extremely well, one of the things we talked about was taking a six-month review of nutrition sites. Now, that's all been turned upside down because of COVID and the closure associated with nutrition sites. But I think looking forward into the budget for 2021, those conversations are important. And certainly, we've seen a dramatic increase, Larry can attest to it, of home-delivered meals. And so that also needs to be funded because folks are in need, and those services need to be provided. We aren't hearing at this time that there's any compromise to the Office for the Aging funding levels, but we certainly, as all departments are, watching those very closely. The other thing that I just wanted to mention, again, slightly overdue and coming back to you on, is the discovery reforms. You were courteous to provide three positions to the Departments of Emergency Services, the Sheriff's Department, and the District Attorney's Office at the beginning of the year in anticipation of dramatic change. Well, of course, shut down due to COVID. So we haven't really been able to measure that as we suspected when we requested the positions. The positions are filled, but we'd like to be able to give you an update on what those numbers look like, on the turnaround time, and verse you in what that looks like for St. Lawrence County. And also looking forward to what 2021 looks like if those positions, as the courts begin to reopen and as the work begins to increase again at the local court level, will look like. So we'd like to bring those to you as well. You were kind enough last week when I requested to be able to provide the City of Augsburg with some assistance they needed with their assessments and getting their tax rolls ready. Well, that has been through great work of the Real Property Tax Department, the Real Property Tax Services Aids they have, and the staff in that department have completed the task. They had it ready for March north, who I believe is also the town of Osipachi assessor, who is assisting the City of Augsburg through the end of September. He was able to pick up the role on Friday afternoon, and were able to complete the work that otherwise would have made great delays, as I laid out for you for the county. We will provide them with a bill. I will bring you a resolution to sign an agreement with them for the services that were provided and be able to accept that revenue associated with the work completed. So certainly very proud of the remarkable work done by our county staff. And we continue to work on things like sales tax and the other areas of requests they make, and we'll be talking about those as we prepare the budget. If you recall, last week, we talked a little bit about the Marine Sanctuary and the opportunity to have Oscego County Administrator Philip Church, as well as Noah Representative Ellen Brody join us. And it would probably be most beneficial if either chair would provide, and the board is willing, to have them come to the operations or services meeting. And I say that because at Finance this month, we'll have a visit from our auditors, who have closed the audit on their own. And so they'd like to be with the audit committee before Finance and then report to you. So I wanted to ask for feedback with that before I continue.
We come.
We take a.
Everybody's all talked out?
I guess. Or asleep. Very big.
Mr. Forsythe?
Is it going to be time limit imposed on both, or?
Certainly holding to our 10 minutes, 15, one question.
Four fifteen.
Go ahead.
Just, Mary, this term just suggests that we are going to have it in services or operations that we, I'm not sure which one's first, but that we have at the, whichever committee happens to be first on the agenda.
Is there any objection to inviting them to come?
Not at all.
All right, so we'll make that plan. One of the areas that you're well aware of has been also delayed due to COVID is the census and our ability to get out and encourage folks to report on the census. Word was received today that the grant that we had budgeted for and planned on has been reduced by half, and that a new plan will be required within a week. So planning staff has been seriously working on amending, it will not provide for staff, but what it will provide for is them an opportunity at least to see some funding to increase the opportunity to get folks reporting. We have, we've worked with Highway Department, and you may see them out and about over the next few weeks to month, gotten the signs out that Don can spare to encourage folks in low-reporting communities to report their census. So that, I think, was well-known news because it's something, but of course disappointing that it isn't all the funding that is, that was expected. And then lastly, I wanted just to give you a quick update on NISAC. As many of you know, NISAC has canceled their in-person fall conference, which is typically in September. And unfortunately for us, it's going to be in late classes, so our travel expenses would also be reduced. Nonetheless, they're going to host their standing committees, which many of you either attend or participate on, virtually over the next two weeks. And once adopted, I'll go over what the subject matter is, I'll share those resolutions with you. If you recall, I'm serving this year as the Chair of the Standing Committee on Taxation and Finance for NISAC. We're meeting tomorrow afternoon, and we'll consider a few resolutions. One, on directing federal aid to support COVID-19 response and recovery, as well as requesting that there be an end to the practice of diverting local sales tax to the plant state responsibilities. I also serve on the Intergovernmental Affairs Committee, and our neighbor to the, to the west, Bob Haggman in Jefferson County, serves as the Chair of that committee. They'll consider three resolutions, the first being rebuilding government, a commission of requesting to identify cost savings preservation of local services without additional cost to local taxpayers. Also looking for additional communication support with voter elections related to providing guidance to them and encouraging a stronger voter turnout. And then lastly, resolution, last resolution they'll consider is an increase to the community colleges to provide. So those are the areas, if you're interested in that schedule or popping in to attend any of those standing committees like you would in person, let me know. And certainly we can get those arrangements and find out when those meetings are being held. And that's all I have on the association questions.
Any questions? No questions?
Thank you.
Are there any committee reports? Rhea, Curran?
I heard from Walt Hall today, the fishing and advisory work. So he sent us a few articles on the Marine Sanctuary proposal, and then it pocketed us all in due.
Thank you, anyone else? Seeing none, is there any old business? Ms. Terminelli?
It's a little old and a little new, it's kind of tied into both. I just, I have some questions and would like to request some clarification on ethics opinions, especially the one that was requested in regards to legislator Haggard. May I direct some questions to the county attorney?
Curran.
Thank you. Mr. Button, I was under the impression that an ethics opinion was requested by an individual on behalf of themselves. Can you just clarify? I'm under the impression that Ms. legislator Haggard just recently had an ethics opinion handed down to her that she didn't initiate. And I'm just wondering, is this a typical protocol or procedure to seek an ethics opinion on behalf of a colleague?
You can actually seek an ethics opinion on the, I don't know if you can hear me, Ms. Terminelli, can you hear me?
Not great.
Is there a microphone? Can you hear me now?
Thank you, yes, very much.
Yes, much better. Under our Ethics Local Law, an advisory opinion may be requested by the individual regarding their proposed prospective behavior or the superior of an individual actually acting about, asking about the behavior of a subordinate or an individual for whom they are responsible for the performance of their work. So it is not just limited to the individual.
So a follow-up question to that? So, so we couldn't request an ethics opinion on one of our colleagues, but Mr. Lightfoot is considered a superior, is that how that works?
Under county law, the chair is actually given complete oversight over all of the activities, the functions of the property, as well as the employees of the county. So that's correct.
Thank you.
Ms. Biaco?
Yeah, so I just have a couple of questions. Who drafted each of the ethics opinions and what research served as a basis for each one?
Is that for the county attorney?
Yes.
Ms. Biaco, I'm sorry, you're going to have to clarify for me.
Like, who drafted each of the ethics opinions? And what research served as a basis for each one?
If you're referring to advisory opinions that are confidential by law, you can speak to any individual that secured an advisory opinion, but I'm not permitted to actually speak to them.
Ms. Haggard?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Because the chairman of our board has chosen to make an ethics opinion about me public, I'd like to address it publicly. Before I took office as a county legislator, I sought an opinion from the county ethics board in regard to my husband, David Haggard, working in the Department of Social Services as general counsel. I received that opinion, and it prohibited me from participation in any discussion and voting on all matters regarding social services. I was further directed to announce such recusal publicly at my first meeting. I have diligently complied with that opinion in its entirety. You can imagine my shock when I discovered Mr. Lightfoot had requested another ethics opinion with the intention of further restricting my ability to function as a legislator. After retaining outside counsel, and before you say anything, not David Haggard, in actuality, it does the opposite. Specifically delineates the three topics regarding David from which I need to recuse. Equally shocking was the description of my position as a subordinate to Mr. Lightfoot. Knowing this to be untrue and a gross misrepresentation of my role on the Board of Legislators, clearly, he was advised by someone of this perceived loophole. It is now clear to me that this misrepresentation was used as an excuse to comply with county ethics law, Article 20, Number 1, limiting who can request an ethics opinion. I am not now, nor have ever been, and never will be, a subordinate of Mr. Lightfoot. As I search for an underlying reason for this attack, I can, I can't help but wonder if it's because I am a female or my desire to speak out on issues of concern to our county, or perhaps a combination of both. I have a great desire to serve my constituents and the people of St. Lawrence County. I can work with opposing views, seeking to find common ground for the benefit of all county residents. I will, however, not tolerate bullying or any form of victimization against myself, my female colleagues, my constituents, or anyone in the county structure. This has the potential to create a hostile work environment. Respect should emulate from all county leadership. Mr. Lightfoot, those who blatantly disregard this core principle should be ashamed. Thank you.
Mr. Arquat?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll be honest with you, I was blindsided by your choice to pursue an ethical determination on Ms. Haggard after she'd already done that. And especially the fact that at a previous meeting, when that was called into question, our county attorney, who I have a great level of respect and belief in, and his findings indicated that there was no wrongdoing, yet you continued on with that. We've just recently lost what I consider a couple very, very good legislators because of ethical decisions that I called into question publicly. You know, I'd like to hope that this was not retaliatory, was it?
Are you serious, Tony? Are you really serious asking that question?
I think everybody here is very serious.
But what do you, what do you think, Tony?
I believe.
Do you think it was retaliatory?
So I can think of no reason.
No matter what I say, it isn't going to change my.
Attorney rendered his decision, and you chose to do this.
Mr. Burr?
Well, as you've heard, Joe requested an ethics opinion on our colleague Margaret Haggard. And as you've heard, an opinion had already been issued at her request before Margaret took office. That opinion prohibited her from any discussion regarding the Department of Social Services, which is the largest and one of the most, if not the most, consequential departments in the county. Furthermore, she needed to make public her intent to abstain from discussions relating to social services. And since this was an advisory, advisory opinion she requested, why did the disclosure have to be public? How can this confidential? How can this confidential, and I want to emphasize confidential because it's in our county ethics law, how can this confidential opinion be reconciled with the mandate for public disclosure upon taking office? What was the point in that? Margaret has faithfully complied with this mandate. So again, what was the purpose of making her state this publicly before or just immediately after she took office? Apparently, this rendering by the Ethics Committee didn't satisfy the chair, so he requested an additional opinion, which was granted under the guise of Margaret being his subordinate in a feeble attempt to comply with our ethics law, Article 20, number one. Like Margaret, and I believe many of my colleagues, we all have the belief that we are one vote, equal standing, and we answer to our constituents. Joe Lightfoot has specific powers and the power to run the meetings, the power to make committee appointments, the power to declare emergencies. They are specific, but it, and I would like and I would challenge Steve to produce that law that shows that we are his subordinates. But anyways, I'm gonna continue. The opinion was given and the hatches tightened further on Margaret, placing additional restraints on her ability to represent her constituents. However, the opinion rendered by the Attorney General's Office and used by the Ethics Committee as a basis for their most recent opinion requested by Chair Lightfoot provides great clarity for both ethics rulings on Margaret. According to the Attorney General's Office, an elected official must recuse himself or herself from participating in matters affecting the compensation, employment, and other terms and conditions of employment of his or her spouse. We have expressed the view that a member of the legislative body may participate in other governmental matters relating to the operation of a municipal department in which her or, her or his spouse serves, except ones in which the legislator has a personal interest by reasons of affinity. Simply said, oh, unlike matters such as salary and conditions of employment of her spouse, she would not have personal interest in these matters requiring recusal. So simply said, there is no reason for her to recuse herself from the discussions about social services. Her only obligation, according to the Attorney General's report used by the Ethics Committee in attempt to further tighten the hatch, according to the Attorney General, the only time she has to recuse herself is, is when the salary and conditions of employment of her spouse are being discussed. That's the only time. And it, and it begs the question of when, when I hear Tony or when I hear Nicole having to recuse themselves from discussions about the power authority, according to this, there's, there's no reason to do that. Any of our discussions have nothing to do with, with their salary or conditions of employment. So the same legal reference by the Attorney General's Office in attempt to restrict Margaret's attendance in executive session clearly demonstrates the significant flaws in the first and core opinion, effectively denying her the opportunity to fully represent her constituents. But rather than correct the first opinion, a choice was made to seek additional restrictions and further restrict her ability to represent her constituents. How could this happen? Does anyone look at the decisions of the Ethics Committee? How does the county attorney decide who his clients are? He is the attorney for the Ethics Committee. He is also our attorney. How does he decide who his clients are and who he's representing? Is there a conflict in representing both the Ethics Board and at the same time representing legislators who represent county residents? How did the, how did the misrepresentation of Margaret's position with regard to the chair occur? Is it not reasonable to believe that this was no accident and that describing her as a subordinate provided the rationale for the ethics requests by the chair? How can we believe that there is an independent functioning of our Ethics Board? Article four of our ethics law states that the ethics code shall not prohibit or require recusal of an action lawfully undertaken pursuant to one's official duties. Yet, what would you call these actions that have been taken against Margaret? This is exactly what happened to Margaret. She sought and continues to seek, only to serve the people of our county. She has never breached our ethics code and will always go the extra distance to assure transparency. So again, we must ask, what are the motives behind this apparent attack? How many legislators must we lose to this ethics process? We are extremely fortunate to have an individual who has a distinguished teaching background, an MBA, and years of experience as a judge. She has an acute awareness of our community's needs and is devoted and determined to address those needs. So I am asking, as, as a colleague and as a legislator, that, that this, this needs to be immediately remedied. The, the idea that, that we would use an extension or potentially use an extension of county government against one of our own legislators is unfathomable. And, and I am asking, and I would hope we all ask, that, that there is an immediate reversal of what Margaret has been asked to do and that they, they, the Ethics Board comply fully with the ruling and the decision of the Attorney General's Office that was used in attempt to place further restrictions.
Anyone else? Is there any old business? Rita.
Just about the fees and penalties on homeowners that couldn't pay their taxes. That might even be under old business, but we never addressed what we were gonna do with that. And I think that we should because that's the, other than the DMV, that is the number one thing I get a telephone call about every day.
Mr. Burke.
Old business, Joe. I want to bring up again my concerns about the Community Services Board and awarding the, the contract to St. Lawrence Health Systems. I'm just gonna say it one more time. It, it was, it was done with, in my opinion, without due deliberation. It was done without an interview of any of the entities. It was done, it was a paper review. Most of the people doing the review, as a matter of fact, all of the people, except possibly one, had no background in substance abuse. It is the first time that I can recall of the Community Services Board ever doing an RFP. I can name you organization after organization that came into this county and they never, they never sought to do an RFP. And, and I'm not opposed to it in principle, but I have to ask, why the, why the sudden deviation? And, and I'll tell you how I view this. I view this as a diversion of taxpayer money to a private entity. We, the St. Lawrence County, were asked to do the methadone clinic. We, nobody else was asked to do that. And, and it has the potential, or had the potential, to turn around our, our balance sheet for all the services that we rendered. It's 1.4 million projected during the first full year of operation that, that we have, we have essentially robbed from our taxpayers. And that, and that in addition to that, that the losses associated with this to our current services are significant. I mean, when, when this, when this, which is wonder, listen, I'm wholeheartedly in support of the methadone clinic. I am not wholeheartedly in support, and I'm not in support at all, of the process that was used. This is a big amount of county money that has been diverted to a private entity. Kevin Aker, you sat on the board, you said that, that unanimously, people all voted for the same thing. Well, well, I'm gonna tell you, it requires an external review. It requires an external review. I personally do not have confidence that, given the facts that I just outlined, that, that a fair consideration was made. I think we've shortchanged the taxpayers of St. Lawrence County and, and I think it's the wrong thing to do. And one other thing, and this wasn't on the sheet, I, I looked at the sheet, again, just gonna say the, the metrics used, first 30 points were basically a description of your, of your organization. The, and, and it, and in addition to that, the, the, they failed one big metric. We failed to, to mention one big metric. And that is, if somebody can't afford to pay, if there's somebody who presents for services that can't afford to pay, St. Lawrence County has always been a provider of last resort. We've never, we've never turned anybody away for not being able to pay. And I ask you, is that true of St. Lawrence Health Systems? Is that true? Do you know that off the top of your head? And if you don't know that, why wasn't it asked? Because, because that's a critical, access to services is a critical point. And it was nowhere on the metrics, among other things. But, but I remain concerned and, and I am, I'm firmly committed to asking for whatever help I can in having someone, some independent entity, take a, a good, long look at the process that was utilized.
Anybody else?
I don't know what happened to my picture there, but anyway.
You can hear me.
Oh, I know what happened.
Go ahead, we can hear you. Hey, you're back. How are you?
I apologize, that was my fault. Further on what Mr. Burke brought up, and since we are so concerned with ethics and transparency on our board, I believe, and I'm not sure, I would pose the question, I believe there are people on the Community Services Board that actually report or are affiliated with the hospital. That concerns me. I am not accusing, I am not saying anything, but I'm asking for transparency. I have heard this from constituents and it, it is something I think should have been revealed to, having come in late to this entire process, I would have liked to have known that. Thank you.
Ms. Current.
So regarding the Community Services Board and having all of this done, you know, when Jay first brought this to us and said, listen, these patients need a higher level of care than what we can give them. They need this methadone daily dosing, they also need additional services, they also need additional things that we do not provide. One of the things that makes St. Lawrence Health System a good fit for this, I think, is that they do have all those services already in place. They do have a system where if someone cannot afford care and they need services, they got charity care, they have social work to hook people up with services to make sure that they can have the programs. And I just really think that people are always forgetting that county is here to give services that no one else can and will provide in a meaningful and useful way to the patient. We are not here to think about whether or not we need to balance one area of our budget with the federal and state funds that someone wants to give us. And that that is better for the county than to allow somebody that is probably better suited with numbers of people and places that they can give people therapy than maybe what we have.
Thank you. Anyone else? Mr. Burke.
Well, Rita, I, I'll address this to the chair, but here's what I would say. This wasn't for me, this wasn't strictly about the finances. I mentioned the finances because there's a whole group of you who love to focus on finances. To me, this is about the qual, this is about the quality of the services. And when you don't have good metrics, when you don't have people who know what they're talking about, doing the review, then how can any of us, and when you don't take the time to interview these agencies, how can anybody be comfortable with the fact that it was done objectively? So let's put the finances aside. I only like to throw in finances because I know how much it means to a number of you. So it's 1.4 million, 1.4 million. So, and Rita, as far, I, I assume you haven't taken the time to read the proposals because last week you made mention before I was cut off. And again, I apologize for addressing you specifically. So I'll just say, last week it was mentioned that, that there won't be any stigma attached to Canton-Potsdam Hospital's clinic, the use of them all, because they'll all go in and out the same exit, all in the entrance and exit. It's not true. Read the proposal. The proposal has everything that's needed. Everything that's required is there. As a matter of fact, Jay went to the effort of contacting the, the people at Crado, the people at Catholic Health Systems, to make sure that our proposal was a solid proposal. So the idea that a St. Lawrence Health System is somehow better equipped to do it is pure hogwash. It is, there isn't a shred of evidence. Read the proposals. Read the proposals. Thank you.
Ms. Haggard.
Thank you. I think Mr. Burke is far more qualified to talk about this than I am, but I will say that my definition of what the county is here for differs greatly from other people on the board. We are not here to take up the slack when privatization isn't possible. We're here to serve the people of the county and not look for ways to shirk our responsibilities.
Anyone else? Seeing none, we have need for executive session, and I entertain a motion to go into executive session. I'm Mr. By Mr. Sherman, seconded by Mr. Forsyth. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie? Go ahead, Mr. Sherman. My apologies.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. At this time, I have appointments for the Youth Advisory Board term to expire August 3, 2022. Mia Bentley of Hewleton, Andrew Deeners Hewleton, Abigail Hughes Potstown, Hannah Hughes Potstown, Alan Probert Messina, Michelle Jerome Lisbon, Casey Jones Potstown, Emma O'Brattley Potstown, Paul Siebel Governor, Cynthia Snyder Lisbon, and Amanda Woods Colton.
And you move those names forward for appointment?
I will move those names for appointment.
Is there second by Mr. Forsyth? Any discussion? Somebody here, Nicole?
No, I was just trying to second that, because it's my committee.
Oh, okay, all right, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie? Mr. Aker.
Mr. Chairman, I offer for reappointments, a couple of young fellows to the St. Lawrence County Industrial Development Agency for a term to expire September 30 of 2023. Ernest Labaff of Potstown and Brian Staples of Camden. I move their appointments.
Okay, seconded by Mr. Forsyth, Mr. Fay, Mr. Forsyth, Mr. Sheridan, Ms. Haggard. And Ms. Curran.
Mr. Ray. You called him Mr. Forth.
What'd I call him?
You gave him a promotion.
Did I? Well, take it, enjoy it.
You called worse.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie? I have two appointments. Harry Smothers to the Governor Fair Board and Larry Denisha to the Chairman of the Buildings and Grounds Committee, which will take the place of the Space Committee. Larry says, I just can't do it with the space on it. He says, we gotta, we gotta change names. So they will take effect immediately. If there is no further business, we are adjourned.